Lawrence, sir.
Hey there.
How's it going?
You alright?
Alright. How are you doing, you two? I just got used to it a little bit. I just about got used to the other one, had a just came aside. On the ride, I let you up.
I'm good.
If we could go ahead and get started, if you would please, stand with us and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance and have an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to come and dissipate in our local government. We just ask that you guys give us wisdom and that your will be done across the name of the prayer.
Amen. Go ahead and open the meeting. First item is minutes, everybody had a chance to review. Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. My way of announcements, just real quick. If you've got your cellphone with you, if you haven't already put it on silent or turned it off, please do so. We can minimize distractions. Also, I don't think we'll get there tonight, at least I hope we don't, but if we do get to nine o'clock, we will have a nine o'clock time certain end of the meeting. Any items that are left that have not been addressed, we'll be moved to the next meeting. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. We have one continuance request tonight, and that is on the Bear Creek Phase Three project. We're requesting to continue that item to a date certain of December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Planning Commission meeting. That meeting will be in this location at four P M.
Misses?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that will give the applicant time to work out their connection issues with the city report.
We're gonna hear number eleven.
Excuse me?
Eleven.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, item number eleven, it's my understanding that the applicant and I agreed on behalf of staff that we would continue this item to this Thursday.
To this Thursday?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Misses?
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, sir, that will bring us to our first item on the agenda tonight, that's our comprehensive plan update. Kristen Schell has been managing this project, and she's been working very hard on that, and I'll ask her to introduce this for us.
Good evening. Item number one you have here is really about the map amendments that you have not seen. You've seen the substantive text of the future land use amendment, but the map amendments are new. And these are really four. One is catching up the N'Kouzi land holdings. So, they've acquired quite a bit of property in the three thirty-one Highway twenty corridor area, and so we want to reflect conservation on those properties. And also, there's another conservation proposed amendment that is the Coffeen Nature Preserve. For whatever reason, that was showing up as residential on our future land use map. So, we want to take those allocations off. Then we also have one requested amendment that is to industrial, which is located on the east side of Highway ten eighty-seven north of ninety, and that's going from rural village to industrial proposed. And these are amendments that would be back to us for adoption as part of our new future land use amendment. And the final one there is amending some Saint Joe properties. This is a court ordered overlay area. The court order actually stated what land use categories those had to be, so that's kind of a no brainer that we apply those land use categories to those properties that are substantively built out, Saint Joe Holdings. And the court order still stays in effect. It just, instead of us calling it court ordered overlay on the flume, we're gonna call it the category spelled out in the court ordered overlay. And you have maps of all of those in your packet, if there's any questions. So, what we would be asking for tonight is recommendation on these amendments, these map amendments to be included in the adoption package of the new future land use amendment.
Misses, you have any questions for staff?
Make the motion approve.
Uh, who's up for public comments, real quick first? Is anybody in the audience up there who has any comments on item number one? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments. We have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item, item number two, under comprehensive plan related amendments, is related to the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan update that we've been working on. We've had a series of public hearings. Kelly Farmir is here, she's the project manager. And this set of amendments really would just be to remove the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, the old one, from the comprehensive plan and adopt a revised one into Land Development Code. But the future land, the comprehensive plan amendment is the striking of that neighborhood plan and bringing it in under the Neighborhood Plan Program and the code. There are also a number of map amendments, and I'm going to let Kelly talk to you a little bit about those and the reasoning behind those. As you, you might remember, some time ago, the board authorized staff to work on the inconsistencies and just the difficulties we had in implementation of the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan to come up with something that made sense from a comp plan to a land development code to a neighborhood plan level. And that's kind of where we're at now. So, I'm gonna let Kelly talk to you.
Good evening. The map amendments that Kristen was talking about, there were a lot of inconsistencies in the old Neighborhood Plan map versus our future land use map that were both in the comp plan. And then bringing on the proposed zoning ordinance map that we are working on now, we saw there were gonna be a lot of conflicts negotiating all of the different pieces. So, through the neighborhood meetings, we worked out where those inconsistencies were. You have several maps there where we've moved items that were already in Platte Residential Neighborhoods into a residential category, and several pieces that had developed commercially or adjacent, that we've moved those into a Village Mixed Use category, which would allow for both the residential and for commercial applications. So, you see several of those. There's also one, after our last public hearing, there was one additional parcel that requested a change from its residential land use category to a Village Mixed Use category. And so, there is an exhibit, I actually wrote on there, item three, because it will come up again in your packet, that we got a letter from an adjacent property owner after we sent a notice about that particular parcel, asking whether or not the adjacent property owner had any comment on whether or not we included that parcel's land use change from residential to Village Mixed Use. So, that's there for you, that piece. The properties along Wall Street that are immediately adjacent to that property, we are recommending that be changed to Village Mixed Use. There are several reasons for that. One of the largest is that there's going to be a tunnel under the Highway ninety-eight near that location, and we're looking at how the transportation network, how we funnel pedestrians to that tunnel as part of that corridor through, through the neighborhood. Increasing to a Village Mixed Use along there, in addition to giving the option to have a little bit more floor area ratio in some of the commercial applications, also requires things like sidewalks and kind of giving that a little bit more of a formal infrastructure as we start taking pedestrians down to the underpass. So, there are a couple of pieces. That's the only property that was not in an existing map conflict that we are proposing to, to change the zoning.
That's change number three?
That, in your additional handout packet, I wrote item number three, because we're gonna come up again under item number three, but it should have been item number two, but it's the one you have there in your hand. There were several text amendment changes also to the, to the packet there for Inlet Beach. One of the largest text changes was talking about, the original plan had a workplace zone in the middle around Orange Street, and that didn't have any definition in the text of how that needed to build out. So, we, we spent a lot of time crafting some design guidelines for that, and then additional design guidelines in the Village Mixed Use area. So, most of the text changes are related to those zones.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Kristen, do you have anything else on this one?
Just, just to remind you that these map amendments have been transmitted, because we got out of whack with the hurricane. So, the board did vote to transmit all, not the Bailey property, but the ones that were proposed by staff and negotiated with the neighborhood. Those did get sent to the state, but we still need a recommendation from you guys before it comes back for adoption.
Okay. You all have any questions for staff?
No.
What about public comments? Does anybody? Audience have?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name is Rich Jaffe, I'm the president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. Thank you. And really, that's why I'm here to say thank you to these guys. Kristen and Kelly have worked for many months, along with our board members, in trying to update a very important guide and set of guidelines for our neighborhood. This is the first substantive change in our neighborhood plan since it began back in the mid nineties. And as you know, Inlet Beach has changed a lot and continues to change, and we have been efforting to make those changes for the best. And it is with the help of these folks that I think we have a much better plan in the foreseeable future here. They have been extraordinarily helpful and creative and very dedicated in trying to work this out. We have not had any major hurdles, except very much what's been going on with the county's comprehensive plan, and that's just trying to clarify stuff that doesn't make sense anymore. We were in the, very much the same boat. I can't tell you how many times somebody would refer to a map and the question would be, well, which map are you looking at? And our maps were different than your maps and different. It is consistency that we are hoping for here. And I want to say thank you very much to the folks that have been involved in this, because I think it's going to make for a much better Inlet Beach in the foreseeable future. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffe. Anybody else?
So, hi, I'm Mark Davis, M A R K D A V I S. I represent the folks who own the property to the immediate west of the parcel that's being requested by the owner to make a land use change, not by the staff. This is the one parcel that the owner is requesting a land use change and not the staff. And I will tell you, it's the parcel, it's hard, it's not the parcel that's adjacent to Wall Street that we're talking about. It's one, you'll see there's three parcels adjacent to Wall Street that they are asking, the staff is asking to change to V M U, and my folks absolutely have no, my clients have no objection to that. But if you move, the parcel that we're talking about, it's a parcel immediately to the east of those three parcels, which would change essentially from residential to V M U. And my folks do oppose that, and the reason's fairly, you know, obvious and simple. We're moving commercial development off of Wall Street into this neighborhood. You'll notice to the immediate east, where my client is, is a fairly large, single-family residential neighborhood. It does abut the crossings at Inlet Beach on the south, but it does not, it moves that commercial development further north and further east toward all these residential neighborhoods and residential uses. And, you know, obviously, my clients oppose that. When they bought this subdivision next door, they never dreamed, and, you know, I tell people all the time, land uses can change, but they made a fairly substantial investment back expectation. They were buying in the middle of what would be a residential neighborhood, a residential area. And now, with this change that's proposed by the owners, again, not by the staff, it is, it will change the, the character of that neighborhood pretty substantially. So, we would ask that you not approve that particular change for transmission.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? Alright.
Thank you.
Kristen, could you explain that to us a little bit?
Commissioners, it's kind of a long story, but I'll make it short. Staff did make the recommendation for the Wall Street changes, and Kelly went through the reasoning for that. And number one reasoning is that we have a vested interest in the underpass and the transportation network in the neighborhood and getting the neighborhood folks to the tunnel and basically facilitating the tunnel happening. So, we feel like that those land use categories being across from the fire station and north of existing commercial, and also their role in the potential tunnel development, that it warranted the change to Village Mixed Use. The parcel immediate to the east, the large five acre parcel there that Mr. Davis was talking about, has also requested Village Mixed Use. Staff is neutral. We don't have any overarching planning reasons for that piece to be changed. In other words, we can't justify that change in the same way that we can on a planning basis for the Wall Street parcels. So, it really is up to you whether or not you want to authorize staff to move forward with that particular parcel or just continue with the transmittal as it was already transmitted by the county commission. Now, the county commission has not seen this request, they will see it next week, but I would imagine.
They will see just this piece next week.
That's right, that's right. So, you know, you can recommend that they take a look at that and we move forward or not, but we do need your recommendation on the actual future land use map amendment, or future land use map amendments that we already transmitted, because we're gonna come back for adoption. So, we have to have your recommendation before those come back for adoption. And we do need a recommendation for sure on the striking of the plan and from the comp plan with anticipation that that's going into the O D C, and that'll happen simultaneously, so it won't be a limbo period.
Lawrence? I'd like to ask Mr. Jaffe a question, if you don't mind coming back up.
Yes, sir.
You, you've said that the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association, I really appreciate y'all working with staff to come up with this plan. I know that you and a lot of people in Inlet Beach have put an awful lot of time and effort into making sure your neighborhood's developed the way you want it developed. What is your thoughts on that site? I'm just curious. Is that, this is not something that was already, was proposed by the county?
Understood.
I'd like to have an ear.
Can we clarify something here? Are we talking about the parcel that came into contention the last time? We were at that same five acre piece? Well, my reaction is, I'm not sure where it stands. The agent who represented the owners at the last meeting that we had here got up in arms about the fact that the other properties were going V M U and told everybody assembled at Infinitum that her clients would want it to go V M U as well and want the same options. And I thought that's where it was going until Mr. Davis said now they don't want it to go V M U.
I think he's representing somebody else. On the other side.
Which other neighborhood?
The neighborhood. Yeah. He represents the neighborhood on the other side.
So, the Ivy folks, which is, again, Valerie Sims?
Was.
Was. Okay. Well, this, this came up as something of a surprise, and I think the consensus from many of us was that in going V M U, it would probably make those properties even more valuable. I, I can't see that it would do any particular damage to the buildings that he's talking about that are currently, some of them are under construction right now. And it purely is a very residential neighborhood right off of North Orange Street. The Bailey property being over towards Wall Street, and Wall Street is going to change a lot. Quite frankly, I don't think anybody wants to build a single-family residential home right across from the fire department or the donut hole. So, those changes make a lot of sense. The development that he's talking about is, it touches the Bailey property, but I don't see that those properties going V M U would do any particular damage to the residential area that he's talking about. I don't think Inlet Beach in general would have any problems with that plan.
You would have any problems with it either way, basically?
I mean, the best thing for, for Inlet Beach is to have a community made up of single-family residences. That's not happening anymore in Inlet Beach. The majority of people who are developing in our neighborhood are building units for profit, and they rent them. So, the idea of, of developing in the Village Mixed Use concept to us in certain areas makes an awful lot of sense, because we can maintain the residential feel of the neighborhood. So, frankly, we don't have a, have a problem with it going either way.
That's my question, I just want to get your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Kristen, what's, what's, what would be the, probably Kristen, what would be the difference in if, if that property is not changed versus if it is changed to V M U, what could be developed there?
I'm gonna let Kelly answer, because she's got a, a really good description of, the, 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 both are new, because, I mean, there's an overlay now to Village Mixed Use that's new, associated with this neighborhood plan, which is what's different about the last time we had a change, you know, to today, is that there are standards there that make it more palatable. So, I'm gonna let her go through those differences, so I don't get it wrong.
Thank you. So, now, currently, that parcel is neighborhood infill. So, neighborhood infill has the ability to have single-family, multifamily, and there is the ability to have some neighborhood commercial contingent on that plan being compatible. The Village Mixed Use, as it's limited in the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, also allows those things. It allows the residential, multi- and single-family and neighborhood commercial uses. V M U for the county allows general commercial uses, which is kind of your larger scale, big box stores, which isn't appropriate for Inlet Beach. And so, in our, in the neighborhood plan, it's limited down to just the neighborhood commercial uses. So, really, the differences that we're talking about are a difference in floor area ratio. So, the, anything that would develop commercially in neighborhood infill would have a smaller footprint than something that would develop commercially or mixed use in the Village Mixed Use category. And the Inlet Beach plan also put in some language about requirements for sidewalks and some additional design infrastructure that's really important when we're talking about the parcels that are left to develop in Inlet Beach for, for Village Mixed Use, which would be the, the ones you see in pink, there's, there's one whole block, and then of course on Wall Street, where we want things like sidewalks and, and some of the pedestrian connections that would be a little bit higher requirement than the rest of the county would have.
Okay.
But use-wise.
Not a big difference.
It's not a huge difference. Both, both of the Village Mixed Use and the Neighborhood Infill require compatibility. They give us the flexibility to install greater buffers, different types of buffers. So, it's really not a huge switch either way.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? It will close public comments. Let me say my thoughts of the county, staff did a lot of work putting this plan together. I think they did a great job. And someone coming into the end requesting something to be added, that's really not going to make any substantive changes to what they could do, and you've got a neighbor to that property who don't want to see that happen, I respect that. So, I, I would recommend, someone else has to make a motion that we.
I'll make a motion.
To approve this presented by staff.
Approve what's staff? Excluding that five acre piece. So, I make a recommendation we accept staff's changes they want to make, except for the five acre piece, and then come back on that one later if they need to.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and the other discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on now to item number three, which is the Land Development Code portion. Really, this is just a repeat of the future land use map amendments, but in the zoning version. So, you've already seen chapter two, which creates zoning for the county. This would just be to show you and get your recommendation on the map amendments, the same ones basically that I described previously for the future land use map. That is item number one. I think you have chapter two in here again, which might be a little overkill, cause I know you've seen it, uh, previously. If you want me to go through that, I can. Um, but, um, I mean, the important thing to know there is that, um, we are eliminating that density bonus system that we've had for a long time. And with that elimination means that hard, uh, established maximum densities have been included. So, whereas before that was kind of questionable was what your density was gonna be, now it's for sure.
Okay. Like you said, we've seen this. It's just a matter of if it's in a different form.
Yeah, it's just with the revised, uh, map.
Commissioners, have any questions to staff? Everybody? Okay. How about? Well, we got a lot of other stuff on here.
We, uh, item number two really is, are those map amendments. Um, tho- those really are one and the same. Um, if you wanna take both of those together, um, it would just be recommending approval of chapter two with the proposed, uh, zoning map amendments to the proposed zoning map.
Now, what you're saying is that we can take just what we have in our package is tab one and tab two?
Yeah, they- we included, uh, chapter two again, even though you've seen that, because the zoning map resides in chapter two. And so, we're really making amendments to something that doesn't exist, so you have it all here.
I understand, but I'm just trying to get, if- if we're gonna make a motion, are we voting on everything in item three or are we gonna do it piece by piece?
No, three needs to be separate. I mean, three- three- part three of three should be separate, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion on tabs one and two?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. Before we get to the motion, is there anybody in the- in the audience who would like to address items one or- or tab one and two of this item? What we've talked about so far? Okay, CN nine, Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, a motion, a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, tab three now.
Tab three is a new item, totally new to you. Um, this is just a strike-through of chapter six. This is part of a major reorganization. And so, the substantive items that were in chapter si- six have been relocated to other, um, chapters of the LDC. There is not a big substantive change here. It's just we need to get this strike-through in ordinance. So, we have a first reading, uh, coming up and we'll need a recommendation from you.
Yeah, what I'm seeing in my tab three is not what you just talked about. It's a coffin.
Well, let's see, maybe it got put under one. Oh, it's all under- all under three. It's at the very back of three. It's just this- it's just a big strike-through of chapter six. It's all under tab three, very end of tab three.
I don't have anything but a map on tab three.
That's all I've got too, is a map.
Oh. You not- you have a big tab for Land Development Code update, cha- tab three. That's where this is. It's at the very end of that. I have it.
I don't see what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's just a map.
Let me show you. It's- it starts with this summary of chapter two. The summary of chapter two.
Is anybody- is anybody in staff looking at what we're looking at?
I think I am.
Electronic version?
I think the difference is that, um, the labeling of one, two, three, four and the text doesn't correspond with the attachment pattern.
Right, but you're- this is the one that you're looking at, so it should be tab three in your packet.
I'm look- what you're seeing on the- what we- what we see on the minutes here, under number- item number three, you've got one, two, three, and four.
Right.
But we don't have that in our package on the computer.
You don't have chapter two of the LDC?
No, I can- I mean, we have the clean, that's- that's under what we have as-
Okay, keep going- keep- keep scrolling through that whole thing.
Under tab two on your tablet?
It might be three C?
Three C.
Three C?
Temporary uses?
That's it.
Okay. If you just go to tab two and open it up-
Here?
Yep. And scroll to- to get to page six of ninety-five. All right?
It's a strike-through of chapter six, accessory and temporary structures and uses. Accessory structures have been relocated to chapter two, which is the new zoning chapter. And so have, um, temporary structures and uses. So, you have everything related to land use in one chapter. That's correct.
Makes sense. Just matter of finding.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. That's your fault.
I'm confused too.
I see what you're talking about now, though.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be in this same spot here for a while?
No, this one, we just need a recommendation on the strike-through and that needs to be one motion. And then we'll move on to Inlet Beach, cause that's completely not related. Um, we'll do a different motion.
Okay, Commissioners? Wait a minute. Does anybody in the audience have any questions on this item or this part? Yes, sir.
Fred Tricker, T R I C K E R, uh, representing South Walton Community Council. And I guess I got a little, uh, concern about all the changes that are going into the comp plan and the land development code. And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of confusion. And I think what may be helpful is if we could put together a, uh, a document that- that has like a as-of comp plan, as-of a specific date, an LDC as-of a specific date, and publish those as we go along. Cause otherwise, if you're looking to see what the- was in the LDC as of today's date, you'd never be able to figure it out.
I agree.
I think that'd be very helpful.
I think Kristen's shaking her head that she'd be more than happy to do that.
Shaking her head this way or that way?
Yeah, this way. Because as you could- me- this is something they've been working on for a long time.
Yes.
And it- and it's a process of getting everything done in place.
Right.
So, I think that would be very helpful to have-
Right.
People to know what's there when they come in the door.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything? Any public comments on that? Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
You're getting exercise tonight, Kristen.
Well, this is it. You'll be done with me after this, I think. Yeah. Um, so the final thing, which is probably gonna be three, A, B, C, D. Um, but I did not repeat the Inlet Beach neighborhood plan, so you'll have to look back at, um, item number one or two, sorry, where we talked about the Inlet Beach neighborhood plan. You know, there's a memo and then the actual neighborhood plan is attached behind there. So, what we're asking for your recommendation on here is the actual inclusion of that revised Inlet Beach neighborhood plan with the map amendments that you previously, uh, recommended into the land development code. It will be appendix to the land development code, just like the other neighborhood plans are.
Okay.
And Kristen, that doesn't include the parcel because it was contested?
It- it- it does not. Currently does not and, um, probably won't if- based on that recommendation.
Right. Commissioners, we need to see a separate motion on that.
Yes, and this would bring them in under the neighborhood planning program. And the thing to know there is that there are substantive and, um, exhaustive notice requirements for change.
Right. That's what we want. Any- any public comments on that? Okay, Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, next item is agenda item number four, the Hunter's Road East Small-Scale Amendment. It's been, uh, reviewed by Bob Baranti and I'll ask him to briefly introduce it. Good evening. This request to approve by ordinance, project number L U M eighteen dash zero 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 twelve. This is a small-scale amendment application suspended by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of John King, requesting approval to amend the future land use category from rural village to general commercial on four point six seven acres. The project is located from US Highway ninety-eight, turn north onto US three thirty-one. The subject parcel is five miles on the east side of three thirty-one before Jolly Bay Road and is identified by the parcel number on your agenda. As I said, um, it- the request is to go from rural village to general commercial. Um, the proposed amendment to the comprehensive future land use plan, um, land use maps provide for an orderly and logical development pattern in the neighborhood. It does not circumvent the goals and objectives of the policies of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan. There are no outstanding comments. And Mr. Jenkins is here today to answer any questions, if you have any questions of me.
Anybody have any questions for staff? All right, now.
Good evening, Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. Um, I think Bob did a good job of explaining what we have here. This is the parcel. You can see it right here. It's about four point six seven acres, just north of the- of the bridge on three thirty-one. Um, this parcel here is being for utilities. They have some utilities located here. Um, this is kind of part two of previous requests. Should be here. These are the other land uses in the area. This is the side. You can see adjacent general commercial here and here and then in other areas. We actually changed this parcel for the same owners a couple of months ago to general commercial. So, this is kind of a continuation of that request. And I- I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have about it.
I know we don't have a development order, but any idea what we want to do there?
Yes, sir. They're looking at doing possibly a restaurant and then a small commercial, maybe a fish market-type business on it.
It would be fitting.
It would be. Very good there.
All right. You all have any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Public comments? Does anybody have anything on this item? CN nine will close public comments. Commissioner, what's your question?
Recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This is the Foreman next.
Yes, sir.
Let's take about a ten-minute break before we get into that. That one might take a while.
Must be.
Would it call me any back order? I'm gonna add a number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the Foreman Large-Scale Amendment. Uh, it's a request to approve by ordinance. Uh, it's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. Uh, it's been submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of Charles Foreman. Uh, they're requesting approval to change the land use from conservation- Excuse me. Conservation, conservation residential two to one, uh, and they're proposing to change that to low-density residential and neighborhood infill on approximately a confined acreage of two hundred and eighty-two point zero five plus or minus acres. Project's located, uh, from US three thirty-one, uh, ninety-eight intersection, uh, approximately two and a half miles to the west, uh, turning north on Veterans Road and proceeding to the north end of the roadway. Identified by the, uh, several parcel numbers in your package. Um, the applicant is here and they're prepared to present their case for this large-scale amendment.
Okay.
Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering again. Um, as Mac said, this is a request, a large-scale amendment request on about two hundred and eighty-two acres. Um, I've got some boards and I'll kind of show you where the parcels are located.
It's not.
Look at the area. The red area outlines where the parcels are located here and- and everything within that with the white dots are included in this request. This is Publix, US ninety-eight. Publix is located here. Um, this is Chat Holly up here. This is Millie Drive and even Woman Road. So, you kind of get a feel for where you are. Um, as Mac says, this total is about two hundred and eighty-two acres. The foreman found the all zones and other forty acres that is contiguous down here. Um, it's already infilled. Uh, the request actually contains everything that's brown on this map currently is conservation residential, two units per acre. Um, everything that's green within this boundary are state prop- were state properties, so they're conservation. The foreman found, they actually did a land swap with the state. They gave them forty some odd acres of a different, uh, on a different piece of property a little further to the south right here around ninety-eight. And they picked up thirty acres of property here. So, those have to be changed to something anyway. They actually gave up some village mixed-use property. It's pretty high-intensity stuff. What they're requesting to get back is basically twenty acres of, uh, low-density residential and ten acres of infill. That's where the infill would be located here, which is adjacent to the other forty acres of infill they already own. So, that's- that's why that's kind of the way it is. Um, I think, you know, that what I would say about this really is that Walton County has very few opportunities for a project of this size to make a difference and actually make some improvements in an area. Um, this request, and Melissa will go into this more, this request is really not about increasing density. The owners of the property don't intend to ask for any more density than what it currently has and with the current future land uses. Really what the request is about is to try to remove, um, clearing limitations that are associated with the CR two to one land use, because this is all planted pine. And it doesn't allow them to go in and enhance some of the wetlands. They would like to make some trails. I would like to see them make some really large, uh, lake systems that are interconnected. We do kind of have a concept drawing that you will see here. It kind of shows primarily single-family residential. All of these lots are roughly sixty-five by one twenty-five or so. Um, the blue area is would be open space. Hopefully, lake areas, they have to go through some regulatory questions to make sure they do that because of some weather. But they would like to enhance that so that they can provide some regional straw order management, some regional floodplain management, and some regional recreational areas for this. Um, they do have an idea for, uh, some multifamily component because of the infill land use there that is already associated with the parcel and some potential neighborhood commercial along the, uh, access here on Chat Holly Road. As part of this project, they do envision, uh, that the roadway connected here from Publix would be extended all the way to Chat Holly. And they do intend to anticipate in that connection to pay the fair share, so it would proportion of fair share costs that attract impact fees to offset their constructing costs for that. Um, that's kind of the highlights of what they're requesting right now, that it- it really is about three hundred acres, which they could really use a little, a little stuff in this area if they're able to get some, uh, relief on some of these limitations.
Okay.
Any questions for me? And I'll just turn it over to Melissa.
Veterans Road. Is there any plans to extend Veterans Road?
Uh, there will be. I- I- I fully believe that it would happen on Veterans Road to get full access to these other parcels that are here and here. I mean, it- it makes a lot of sense, I think, for them to do that, but I do believe they will do that. Now, this road makes more sense, cause there's a light on the US ninety-eight here. So, this one, I think, is the preferred location for a main corridor. If you were to talk to Public Works, which we did, they would prefer it to be at this location. But I actually think there'll be a couple of extensions that we go more inside here before it's all said and done.
I'm sup- I'm assuming Melissa's gonna go over this?
Yes, sir, I think so.
Okay, I just, all right. I'll save this question. Anybody else have anything for? Mr. Chairman, Scott? All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Ward with Dunlap and Chipman, uh, representing the Foreman family. Thank you. So, um, I'm just going to go over some of the things, the request is what we're talking about. And for clarity, um, you already are aware that this is a land use map amendment request. That means that the, um, map, the overall map for Walton County currently says Conservation Residential two to one and, and Conservation on property. The property that is Conservation has no density intensity because it was state owned land and they traded it with the Foremans for some property that the state wanted more than what they have now. And so that property, um, when they traded with the state, they, they end up with a piece of property that cannot utilize, um, under their investment. So that's something that we'll talk about a little bit as we go on. The Conservation Residential property, which is the mass majority of that, is planted pine. So, um, the understanding of what Conservation Residential was at the time that it was adopted in nineteen ninety-six and for most of the properties, you know, between the bay and Highway ninety-eight, was about properties that contained a vegetation, a vegetated area that they wanted to leave largely in Conservation subdivisions. The problem is that Conservation subdivisions were not created in those areas and are very difficult to create and maintain. And this property was owned and operated as a tree farm, or no, I'm sorry, tree farm is not the right word, planted pines. So they row plant, they clear them out, they row plant and they clear them out, less and less over the time and they are being managed by, by the, uh, property owners as they are now, under the state regulations. These are not highly sav, salvageable, um, trees that you want to keep for preservation. That is not what they are. And they are, and we're going to have somebody else speak to that a little bit later. But I wanted to make sure we're clear, Conservation Residential was meant for people who wanted to do Conservation subdivisions where you have a house nestled in on a lot with sixty percent of that vegetation preserved. This property is not that piece of property. The request for a land use amendment, um, as you know, we are moving on towards zoning. You just talked about the zoning categories that are being adopted for Chapter Two. In a few months from now, when that gets adopted, there will be a zoning category that is Low Density Residential, there's a four to one, and there's a two to one. So that's happening, that's in the process right now. So let's re- recognize that Conservation Residential two to one, changing to Low Density Residential two to one, is an even swap, removing the, removing the prohibition of clearing sixty percent of that land. Do you follow what I'm saying?
It's an even swap with the exception of...
Density is an even swap.
Right, density is an even swap.
Density is an even swap. Low Density Residential does not contain a limit on how much property that you can clear other than your impervious surface ratio and your, um, your FAR for your buildings. However, again, we're going back to the fact that this property is planted pine. This is not primarily Conservation land. This is just to show you the lots that are included in the, um, proposal. And, um, the location of the property is loc, is, uh, specifically situated north of Publix on Highway ninety-eight. There's some surrounding subdivisions that are developed between five and eight units to the acre. Chat Holly is on the north side of this, developed at five and eight units to the acre. This is not, I mean, it's a big piece of property, but it's surrounded by residential and commercial developments. The property that they gave to the state is on the south side, immediately direct, directly south of this and ninety-eight. So, and, within the same regional area. Twenty acres of Conservation land, which had a density of, uh, two uni, one unit per two and a half acres and a, no non, no commercial capacity. Ten acres of neighborhood infill at eight units, uh, per acre and fifty percent FAR, which is two hundred and seventeen plus non-residential capacity, two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. And ten acres of village mixed use, twelve units to the acre and two hundred percent FAR, which totals, they are giving up, they gave to the state, two hundred and eight dwelling units and over a million square feet of commercial use. That's what they gave to the state. They received in that trade, Conservation land has no density, no res, no, no non-residential capacity. So they gave up a million square feet and two hundred units and they got this property that is more so socially situated, perfectly situated with their property at zero.
Voluntarily.
Yes, they did, absolutely. So the property, so let me go back to see if I can show that, if you could look on the map, you can see where the property is located. You can see why the state wanted this property. Around these little marks, one, two, three, and four, is Conservation lands. All of these properties are surrounded by Conservation lands and it's area that the state finds suitable to their needs. The property that they gave to the, that they traded with the Foremans is ten acres less than what they received and it was perfectly situated within areas that are going to be developed because they have a land use category that allows for residential and commercial development. So it was a good swap for the state, they were very pleased with the idea. And I, and again, we'll have somebody else who was working on that swap to discuss it further with you. The cap, the, the swap that it, as it occurred, creates in that region twenty-five percent less residential and ninety percent less, uh, commercial space, commercial intensity. So it has significantly decreased that commercial intensity along the nor, ninety-eight corridor in that region and, you know, somewhat decreased the residential capacity. If the approved, uh, if the request gets approved, the switch to residential is going from over two hundred to a hundred and twenty. If we get the infill and the Low Density Residential two to one, we'll get a hundred and twenty units out of that, we gave up two hundred and eight. If we get the Low Density Residential and infill, we will get, um, about two hundred thousand square feet of commercial, we gave up over a million square feet. So you're still reducing regionally the impact on that area, the impact on ninety-eight and the impact on those roads that will go north and south through there. What happened since nineteen ninety-six? What happened since they originally put Conservation Residential in there? They widened the Highway ninety-eight, they included places like Publix and, and Walmart came to the area that we didn't have before. The residential developments along ninety-eight and Chat Holly grew since that time and there are utilities now, water and sewer that wasn't available at that time. So it's not that the area has just, we've never wanted it to change, it changes and we're trying to, you know, continue to be, move forward with that in an appropriate, sustainable manner. The request to change to Low Density Residential, again, two to one, is a request to be able to develop the property in a way that is effective and efficient and can allow for some workforce type lower income housing, that's not affordable housing, but affordable for the people who do the jobs here. We have people who are doing jobs here that work at Sacred Heart Hospital, that work in the offices of all the attorneys and lawyers and accountants and everybody else, and they don't always get to live here. In fact, a good majority of them lived in Bay County. So it's important to realize that people are coming over here now, looking for places to stay and we don't have enough. This is what this type of development does. It opens it up enough to put something in there when the county's in the, in the direct position to say, we'll let you do that, but we have some conditions. And those are the kind of things that we're looking at today. Our land development code and comprehensive plan have rules and regulations in place. Our comp plan specifically says the county will provide housing for people here and we will provide a way to make that housing so that they can afford it and live here and work here. The, the comprehensive plan says we need to allow these opportunities for lower income households as members to, um, as it means to meet the county's needs and disperse it in the needed housing market. We don't have a lot of housing market that allows for people who work in the area, actually service the area. So they have to live north of the bay or they have to live over in Bay County, which we can't do that now. Conservation Residential is specifically excluded as a land use category that allows for low how, lower cost housing. So your code, your comprehensive plan specifically says, we allow this type of, we want you to do this type of housing, but not in Conservation Residential.
What price range are you talking about when you say affordable housing?
Well, it's not affordable housing because that's a statutory requirement.
Right, so you're talking about workforce housing?
I'm talking about where people are making forty or fifty thousand dollars a year, they can't afford to live here, south of the bay. I mean, that's just, that's just what it is. If you want to rent a house here, the lowest that you can find currently in this area, and I've been doing, I've been looking like every day for anything that's going on because people are coming over from Bay County and they work at hospitals and the fire department.
I'm just asking what, I mean, there's a distinction between affordable and workforce.
Absolutely.
I think you've done a good job explaining that, you're not looking for building subsidized housing.
We are not.
Okay.
No.
Although I think it would be a good idea, but...
I think there's a place for it, I can't say that there's a market for it, south of the bay at the moment, to be honest.
I understand.
The Conservation, um, category is a good category. Please don't misunderstand, we're not saying that across the board this should be eliminated. It's that it doesn't meet this piece of property. The criteria is, there is, there are wetlands on the property, there is a flood zone, uh, on the property and there are veg, it's largely vegetated and vacant land. But that vegetation is planted pine, the wetlands should be enhanced to create a better system and the flood, and with a development plan that is engineered properly, you would be able to regionally handle some of that stormwater that's not being handled presently. In fact, it, it improves the situation out there, should you be able to do that. The, um, land use category for Low Density Residential encourages clustering. It encourages you to stay out of those areas anyway. And the, uh, when you adopt that zoning, you'll be able to max that out at two units to the acre regardless. Now, we did submit, just recently, a developer agreement that, um, the county attorney has yet to see you, I believe, or at least review it, and she has to have time to do that. But it is submitted, it was based on one we've done recently, you might recall, um, Ocean Estates, we did one for them. And, um, it specifically mentions the criteria that we felt like were being requested, limiting it to two units to the acre for those areas that are Low Density Residential. And, um, creating a system that allows them to not be encroaching into any of the wetlands and to not be, um, to get as much as they can out of the floodplains and, um, pe, to be able to utilize the language that was recently adopted to enhance the wetlands and create some, some, uh, community effects here that are well wanted. Not to mention transit routes through the system, uh, through the development so that when people come here, they should be able to come here and if they want to go, they, if we're able to build it and they want to go somewhere else besides their community, they can get on a transit and go down instead of taking their cars down to thirty-eight, ninety-eight east and west. Now, Scott already showed you the trail system, I don't know how much of it you were able to see. I have included it, but it's not as nice as his big board. There's a lot of walkable areas out there and there's some really great, uh, views that need to be enhanced. And that's, this is that capacity, it could, uh, connect with the county's trail system, it could connect with anything that is connecting the, uh, walkable and bikeable areas through Chat Holly and down to Highway ninety-eight. So there's a clear and clean opportunity for the county to improve some of their own trails along with, within the subdivision.
Public access.
Absolutely.
Through those areas.
Yeah. So why do we need to approve it? We need to do this because the land use category as it stands now is prohibitive for development. If you are able to only clear sixty percent of the upland area for development, it creates an unnecessary burden for them to try to develop something they can't. And, um, the Low Density Residential, two units to the acre zoning, it's the same density transfer, it's a, just a slide over, it just removes that clearing problem. And the, um, in addition to that, the area is ripe for something, a development of this nature next to, it's centrally located to the jobs where people need to be. The jobs for the people who are able to, to, who need a, a, a lower cost housing to be able to stay in the area as opposed to having to drive thirty minutes or forty-five minutes or an hour just to get to their job. And we're pushing people to find homes outside of Walton County.
Like, anybody, you all have any questions for, Ms. Ward? Because I do, but I don't want to dominate her. This developer agreement.
Yes, sir.
Legally, if it's adopted, how binding, I mean, if the current property owner developer signs this and sells the property, does this transfer with the property?
It runs with the land, it is recorded in the public record of the clerk of court.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Sidney? Yes, it's ac, it's tied to the parcel ID numbers.
Okay, so it stays with the land?
Yes, sir, and a title company will pick it up whenever they, if they sell the property, it is a part of that title policy as something that they recognize. It has to be recorded with the clerk of court before it becomes valid and they can move on to the next phase of development.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, you have a development order with this development agreement and the development order expires?
The development agreement does not.
Development agreement does not expire.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and from what I'm seeing in here, the density, my concern is density.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we don't need eleven hundred houses being built down there because I don't think the area can handle it.
Correct.
So what you're, is this language that you have here, and Sidney might be able to help me.
Yeah.
Is it going to limit development to what's currently allowed?
So the question, let me make sure I answer it correctly with you. Right now, what's on that property, there is three parcels that are Conservation, strictly Conservation, have zero density.
Right.
So if the amendment is approved and this is recorded, if they're changed to Low Density Residential, they will get two units to the acre. There's one parcel they're changing to infill that will have a maximum of eight units per acre. But...
And that's up next to the other.
That's, that's in that cluster.
Marriott to that property.
Yes, sir.
That makes sense.
That will come, that little neighborhood infill node as, as it be part of that, yes, sir.
Okay, so everything else would then be limited to basically what it is now, two to one?
That's correct.
Is that correct, Sidney?
Uh, that's probably a question better for, suited for Kristen.
Well, in, in Conservation Residential, you have two to one, but you're limited to a certain portion of buildable area.
Okay.
This would be two to one over the entire development site.
Two to one, except for the parcels that are neighborhood infill.
Or it would be eight.
Yeah.
Total density on this parcel, other than the neighborhood infill. Kristen, would it change from where we are now?
Yes, well, I mean, your yield would, I mean, you're not going to be able to cluster, you know, that whole sixty percent, your yield, your yield will be different. And this basically limits them to the zoning district. So whatever, if they go to the zoning district of two to one, it would limit them to that because you remember you guys adopted a new two to one zoning district?
Right.
So that would be what their, their density will be.
Okay.
Without, but there's no sixty percent satisfied.
Let me clarify what, I believe, if I may, can I? What, 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 here's the difference, you asked if there is, if this is the same across the board. Her response is, under Conservation Residential, because there's a sixty percent rule that doesn't allow you to clear sixty percent of that, you could not possibly get two units per acre.
Correct.
But with the Low Density Residential two to one, you could get the two units per acre.
Okay.
Now, they have a, but we will clarify, and, and two, Conservation Residential doesn't allow for multi-family. So you can't stack and put, you know, townhomes and all that stuff, it's a single-family structure.
Right.
So you, you would, would it be increasing the density that you're allowed to have at two to one? No, would you be able to build more, you'd be able to build two to one versus whatever you could get with Conservation Residential? Is what she's saying.
In this area, because...
I'm lost, I'll be honest with you, I don't understand what you're saying.
They're going to get more units, period, they're going to get more units.
You have to conserve sixty percent of what they are now.
But if, if you took it as a pure two to one.
Then it's the same.
It's the same.
Yeah.
You'll get, you'll, you'll be allowed more because of dropping the sixty percent reservation?
Yes.
What would be their maximum density under this proposal?
How many acres are, uh?
Well, it's two, it's two ninety, it's two hundred and ninety acres.
To what now?
It's two hundred and ninety acres, so three hundred acres, like six hundred plus the eight units on, we're not doing the infill.
Two eighty-two is residential? So that's like five hundred and forty-four units in the residential. And then how much neighborhood infill do you have?
Okay, I'm, I'm concerned about the residential, what I'm talking about.
So you're like six hundred and twenty-four units? But I mean, they're going to have less.
There'll be a nominal increase in actual density. But with what you're going to be doing, if I understand correctly, in creating these open spaces, park type stuff, enhancing wetlands, enhancing drainage and water management, that, that, I think adds a significant piece that we, we do need, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll just add to that, I mean, you can kind of look at the concept here, um, you know, the open spaces, I think we had about seventy-two acres of like proposed kind of pond areas and wetland enhancements, so just... I think we had about seventy-two acres of like proposed kind of pond areas and wetland enhancements, so just, you know, open space. You know, the lots that are proposed here are all pretty good size for this area, you know, six and five by one twenty-five. I can assure you, I could get the same number of lots. I would just make it smaller. I mean, I honestly, you can make it fit. It would just be smaller, so you could definitely get the same yield with C F one, I would say. But it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do anything substantial to improve the area, so.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. You're, you're going to have, what you're proposing would have significant improvement to the overall area.
Yes.
In the roadway, I mean, so the developer's actually going to have buy-in on that extension of that, that roadway?
Right, because we currently have, go ahead.
I was just going to say, with, with funds and with property too there, because they're going to be right away, they're going to be used for stormwater management, which they can include on this development thing. So it'll be a master plan type facility.
And that roadway, that right of way will not be, that'll be given to the county?
Yeah, the county, the county actually already has easements to here that's sixty-six feet.
All the way through?
All the way through, yeah. I sort of believe it hasn't been cleared yet, but all the way through. They will be able to, but, but with this, we need to have other things like stormwater management. They'll be able to use these facilities to do that. Plus, they'll be taking part in construction.
Alright, alright. That's got you covered for now.
Okay. It's a good thing I brought him.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comments. I know we had a few sign up, so I'll go through those. Laura Leir?
Good evening. My name's Laura Leir, L E H R. My husband, Michael, and I live within a mile and a half of this property. And we also own a parcel on Chet Holly within three hundred feet. And I just, my, my concern is the sheer magnitude of the proposed development and what kind of burden it's going to put on the surrounding area and our infrastructure. Chet Holly is already pretty full, high speed traffic in a thirty-five mile an hour zone with double lines. You're hard pressed to go forty-five miles an hour and not have somebody pass you after tailgating you for quite a ways. The southbound right turn lane to Chet Holly from three thirty-one was eliminated following the bridge construction. And the traffic already backs up eastbound to make a left turn from Chet Holly to three thirty-one northbound. County Road three ninety-three was overwhelmed at the intersection of ninety-eight long before Safco ever came along. And I guarantee you now, you can sit there in their parking lot any morning or afternoon and witness how dangerous that intersection's become. So even with an overly generous estimate of only one car per household in a proposed development like this, the area is far from being in position to handle it. Simply put, we just don't have the infrastructure in place. And at the same time, under your seal, pride, preservation and conservation, when the World Wildlife Federation just came out with statistics stating humanity has wiped out sixty percent of the world's wildlife over the last forty-five years, it would be a terrible injustice to this community and the wildlife that lives here to overdevelop and destroy what's been left of their environment. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Relax first. We're not, we're not going to bite you.
It's the first time I've ever done this, so.
We're not going to bite. Do you think that running that roadway from Publix all the way down to Chet Holly will alleviate some of the traffic on Chet Holly and even on three ninety-three?
It'll alleviate some, but I don't think nearly enough.
Well, I think it gives people another way out, which is important.
It give them another way out, but it's also going to give you, everybody that lives in the area now, another in to avoid three ninety-three.
At a traffic light, which is, which is important as well.
Right. Which is very important, yes.
And my second question would be, if we do nothing today with what they're asking for, they're still going to be able to build just as many homes as they would with the change, but you would lose a tremendous amount of improvement in the area as far as water management and enhancing those wetlands. Does that have any value to you?
I, I still question the sixty percent. We're all, so now you can develop that sixty percent. So now all of a sudden, you are, you're doubling up on, in, from what I understood, you're doubling up on...
No, because they're limiting.
Are they, okay, but if it's going with the land, like the development order, I don't know that much enough to speak eloquently about it. But if it goes with the land, does that mean if the land gets sold?
Yes.
The next developer has to stick to it?
That was my question.
Has to stick to the same plan?
It will be recorded on the deed. That's correct.
Okay, and then as far as the lakes and all that, is that all part of getting approved? Like they're committed. They can't come back and say, okay, well, we've got it, so now we can go.
And that, that was my concern with the development agreement and making sure that it moves forward with the property. It doesn't, it doesn't expire if the developer sells it to another developer.
And just so we're clear, so the developers agreement, just so you guys know, we're going to need to make some changes to, to address some of these things. And I'm sure that the developer will be willing to do that before we go to the B C C. But a lot of those can be flushed out in the developers agreement.
But those are the things that I think are important to us as well. And I can understand your point of not wanting to make change, but there's some, there are a lot of times where change is healthy.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
If it, if it doesn't have negative impacts and in fact enhances what's already there.
Right.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin O'Neill.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Neill. I've lived here for about fifteen years. I realize what's in question is not a developmental order, but rather just a zoning. And I do think that having a road going up to Chet Holly, I took Chet Holly this morning, would improve the traffic flow. And it might also just be a convenience for some of the people that live there. But one question I have is, is this development mainly supposed to be single family homes?
Yes.
Well, and again, I do realize this is not about the development order. But two examples that I consider to be effective efforts in the area to provide housing and also workforce housing would be Sanctuary at three thirty-one right across the street and Top Sail, which is just west of Butler Elementary. Top Sail has eight buildings that produce sixty-plus two-bedroom units. And I believe they have eight units per building over here in Sanctuary about sea, or Sanctuary at three thirty-one. And from an environmental conservation aspect, I believe that is a much more effective way of providing housing, while minimizing the impact and not needing to build into or change your conservation zones. But I realize this isn't about the developmental order, and I do think that the change here as they're requesting, I don't have a problem with.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Celeste Cabina?
Last week, I met with the planning department and this development, developer agreement was not mentioned at all. And so this is a, a change from very recently, and I can see that the attorney hasn't looked at it, anything. And, and I feel like this whole change of land use or, or is got to slow down and we need to take a better look at it because I was here, I, I think it ought to be denied because if you change the land use, you don't know if this developer agreement, this is brand new. And I think you need to stop and take a look at this. The attorney says we may have to change it. This is completely new. Because this piece of property here, it's mostly wetlands. It's in a flood zone. And FEMA needs to reevaluate their maps. And there's a letter here from, uh... FEMA even agrees that their maps are outdated and needs to be looked at. And we're having these hurricanes and...
I'm sorry, do you want this to be made as an exhibit?
Yes, yes. And, you know, Texas got flooded last year, areas that had never flooded before. And I think you have the potential here and possibly do a better project with this developer agreement. But, you know, just changing the land, you're going to increase the density and there's already too many people here. You know, the roads can't handle it. And you're, you're saying, well, we're going to put this one north-south road, possibly another one. And you're still overloading ninety-eight, you're overloading Chet Holly. And it's the current taxpayers that are going to be paying for this. These people haven't paid any, barely any taxes on this land. They have given nothing to Walton County. And I feel like this change is, is, from what it looks like, is just to benefit these South Florida land company. So they can come in and, and now change their land, sell it, and they have given nothing to our community, but we're going to pack a whole lot more people in here. And I think this needs to be continued to further examine this developer agreement. If there is a developer agreement that says, we're going to keep the same density that they currently have, well, then that's not a bad thing. But I think at this late time to just bring this up, because we did meet with the planning department last week about this. And this, I was just handed this two minutes ago.
I was too.
Yes. Well, and that's why I think you need to continue it.
Miss Cabina, can I speak?
Yes.
Because I think it's important to recognize if, if they're bringing this forward, if we were to make a recommendation with B C C to move forward, it would be conditioned upon this being finalized. Do you understand that?
Correct.
I mean, so, and I think that this is, obviously like our attorney said, it's a work in progress. And I think that they're heading in the right direction. As long as they get there, I think it's a good thing.
And we can make a recommendation.
Yeah, we can make a recommendation conditioned upon.
Okay, well, okay, because we, we really have too much density here now.
But you know what? It's not going to change the density much at all, so.
Well, from what they were saying, it could, it could.
I disagree.
They're still going to have to go through the zoning process to get all the wetlands and stuff.
Correct.
All that's going to have to be done when they go through the D O process.
You know, I've, we've seen so many times here in Walton County where don't worry, we're going to do it right and it doesn't happen that way. I, I'd love to believe it, but I don't ever see it.
No, I hope you can believe it. Because I do. Fred Tricker?
Thank you. Fred Tricker, T R I C K E R, representing South Walton Community Council. First of all, I want to thank the representatives of the owner. We met with Colleen Castile back in September. And at that meeting, we were provided with a preliminary site plan. And it was a very helpful meeting. We had some of the neighbors in there and it helped us get a better understanding. And I want to thank Planning as well. We met with Kristen and Bob last week on the, on the developments. So, so I think we're in a better place to kind of evaluate whether this is something we can support or not. So I think the primary concern with the proposal relates to the flood plain. Just eyeballing the flood plain map, it looks like eighty percent of the property is in Zone A, which is a special flood hazard area. And not only that, but it has not had the flood insurance study done. So they don't know exactly what the flood conditions are. They don't know what the base elevation is. And if you don't know those things, you can't determine how much fill you need to bring in. You can't determine really what is, what really is developable. So from that point of view, I'm saying, you know, this is kind of premature to be looking at what the zoning ought to be. And, you know, I'm, I'm kind of for some of the objectives. But one of the objectives is workforce housing. Well, I question really whether you're ever going to get workforce housing in South Walton. My understanding is you got to sell home for something less than two hundred thousand dollars. And I don't see that happening in this area. But notwithstanding that, the workforce housing proposal is not part of the developers agreement that you're looking at. It's not in there. So when this property goes to a developer, he's not bound to anything that we're talking about here in terms of justification or need for workforce housing. And I just, I just don't see it happening. I think you kind of need to discount that. The wetlands thing, I don't, I don't really understand. Got one hundred and twenty-one acres of wetlands. I don't really understand how you can get out from a great deal of mitigation on that and how that would be accomplished. There is a, there, there are a lot of questions about the development. The preliminary site plan that we saw showed a density of two point six, I think. So I'm assuming that it's not really valid anymore. I didn't see any evidence of clustering. It looked like everything was either retention ponds or building lots. I didn't see any open space of any kind, other than the ponds. And, and maybe that's changed. I don't know. But it seems to me that the, the best way to move forward on this is not to give this land use amendment at this stage of the game. What we really need to do is develop a PUD that addresses the serious questions we have about flood plain, about the wetlands, clustering, and all those things. It needs to be developed as a PUD. And then in conjunction with that, you can do a land use amendment. And hopefully, it's one that we could support at that point because then we see exactly what it is. There's, there's just too many open issues to deal with right now. And honestly, I don't know what the hurry is on it. I don't know why we need to consider this before all these other serious issues have been addressed. I don't understand that. So my recommendation is to hold off on this land use amendment and we'll tell you about some, some more details.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Buzz Livingston?
My name's Buzz Livingston. That's L I V I N G S T O N. I just want to agree with everything that Fred and Celeste said. And I want to add one thing too, is that when you, when you cut timber, and I've been in the timber business all my life. I've, I've got timber laying on the ground in Georgia right now. You cut timber, take it off a piece of property, it's going to affect how, it's going to affect the geology, it's going to, hydrology of the property. You're going to have property, you're going to have water that runs off that didn't, that didn't run off before. And the notion that you're going to improve wetlands is, strikes me as, as just a sheer height to follow. My son-in-law, Bill, he's a builder in Houston. And so I can tell you right now, building in wetlands does not work out well. He didn't have anything flood, but that was just blind luck. And, you know, I've lived here long enough to know that there, there can be twenty inches of rain come in a short period of time in places that you never saw flood will flood. And I just, I, I think that we should at least slow walk this. And I just want to agree with what Fred and Celeste said. And, and just to reiterate, a lot of times we hear that, I've been here, my, my wife was the county manager at Seaside in nineteen ninety-nine. And I've heard so many times that, well, this time we're going to do it right. Well, this is time, let's try and do it right this time, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, nobody else have signed up? Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Morano. I live at twelve Dock Trail. Northwest Florida is positioned for growth, and the challenge is to manage that growth in Walton County. So we don't make the same mistakes that they made in South Florida. We have a responsibility. That's why you're sitting up there. That's why I'm here in front of you. And the responsibility entails being stewards of the environment, looking at the expensive nature, proper development, wetlands, et cetera. Everything you've heard from the speakers before me. The land use change from conservation residential to low density residential needs more information. I support that you delay this. As sir, you, when they were explaining the density from what I, when I, the numbers I did, it went from five eighty-four to one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. That's not correct. That's not correct. But I still don't understand the amount of density that is going into this development. We're still talking about forty-seven percent of wetlands. What I've been hearing is that this is going to be enhanced, quote-unquote, and regionally handled. We don't have that information yet. And that's the fear that I think the speaker that I am talking about and the speakers before me have. The fear of what is really going to happen to this property. And the best action that you can make on this Foreman project is really to delay it until you have more information.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Carolyn Zonia, Z-O-N-I-A. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I got in too late to sign up. I would like to speak against this project as well. My concern really is the stress that we're putting on the bay. And I know there's some critical creeks that drain directly into the bay in that area. And I'm concerned about that. I don't understand the rush to try and get something approved that isn't even finalized yet. The other thing is, I have a question. If, if we have land that is zoned in a particular way and a developer comes and asks you to change that, and all of the residents are concerned and say, don't change it. Who, who, you know, which side do you guys fall on? If we ask you, please, don't do this, we're concerned about this, we're worried about the risks to wildlife, to the land used, to the bay, but somebody else comes in and says, well, we really wanna do this. This is, this is our plan, this is our project. You know, how do you make that decision? Because we're all asking you.
Very easy.
Because, you know, it's interesting to see how it falls, right?
Right.
Because we, I sit here and I, I hear all these people come up and testify and I'm like, wow, those are good arguments. Wow, wow, wow. There's no way they can vote to approve this amendment. And then I sit in the back of the room and it gets approved and I think, how did that happen?
There's a lot of information to be considered. And everybody's passionate about their side, I understand that. But I understand something also. We don't approve anything. We make recommendations to the BCC and they're the ones that make the hard decisions about approval or not.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address this? Mr. Tricker, you already been up once. You wanna come back? If you'll make it brief, make it brief.
I just forgot to mention that the BCC meeting on this item is scheduled for the thirteenth of November. And I believe there's a requirement in the Walton County code, you gotta get thirty days.
I'm sure our attorney will make sure all those legal requirements are met.
Okay, fifteen, fifteen dot thirty? It says you gotta have thirty days between the planning commission meeting and the BCC meeting.
I'm sure our attorney will make sure all those things are taken care of.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public comments. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Charles Forman. I understood I would have a similar vote on the issue.
Yes, sir.
Is this all?
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Gotcha.
I'll first, I apologize. I'm waiting for some bone grafting to grow in from surgery on my hip. And I'm not supposed to put any weight, significant weight on it, so if I can sit here, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right, first, let me thank you all for your service and being here. I was on Marion County Planning Commission for many years. And you don't get paid, you get up and you go through this process, you spend a lot of time. And it's generally a thankless job and I appreciate it, appreciate your being here. Today, I am one of the managing partners of the entity. We took the property out of individual family members put it in. And I represent thirty-two of the grandkids, great-grandkids, and great-great-grandkids who own this from when grandparents acquired it. If anybody in the room, if you're...
Can y'all still hear him back in the back?
Okay.
Okay, I think that microphone's not working right or something.
Continue, we're running on...
He's gonna get you a new battery, I think.
Okay.
There we go.
All right. Anyhow, what I was saying, if you're seventy-three years old or older, you were actually alive when we acquired this property. And that's the length of time that we've had, the majority of it. And through that time, and before then, it's been used prominently for silviculture. One person stood up and said, well, you know, these people, they never did anything for the county. And, you know, that's not true. I was just sitting here thinking about it. George Ralph called me many years ago and said, Charlie, we need a deed because unfortunately, we built hole six and seven of the golf course on your property. The county road department called us and said, we need to use this ten acres for a bar pit for fill. You know, Commissioner Meadows wanted ten acres for the park west of the south of ninety-eight. We haven't stood anybody's way. How this actually began, the impetus for this land use change, was in two thousand four and five. The county commission came to us, the road department, and asked, would we be willing to allow them to put a road from ninety-eight to Chat Holly through our property? And we agreed that they could do that. The plan at that time was to come up veterans and I, is your thing up? And then you would make a turn to the east and ninety-degree turn to the east, more or less, and then go over to where Nellie Road is and then go north and come out there. They surveyed it, they did their soil samples, they did their environmental studies. And then we fell into, you know, the biggest depression of all of our lifetimes. And county didn't have any money and it went on the back burner. But that really got our family, together with the county, to start looking at what to do. The, you had a great question earlier about Veterans Road. Veterans Road will be extended. It's, unfortunately, the industrial subdivision that was turned into a residential subdivision by D.R. Horton to the south of us. They constructed Veterans Road on, in a fifty-foot-wide basis. So it doesn't have the sixty-foot width, which doesn't help it, it doesn't have the stoplight. But nevertheless, it'll be brought up and brought through this property. People have talked about that there, you know, too many people, too many cars. I've heard that at every planning commission, county commission meeting, deal with land use I've ever been to. You know, I understand, it is a concern. There are a lot more people here now than I went, I spent a year here working on these properties in nineteen seventy-three. It's a different place. But the point is, more people are coming and what are you gonna do about it? We met with the county commissioners twice, at least twice with each of the commissioners. And I know I met with Mac and Kristen at least three times. And with everybody, we said, what do you want us to do? We have this big piece of property, it's the last big piece of property in the south, south of the bay. What would you like to see go here? And the county commission said, we would like to have a reasonable amount of workforce housing. Can you do that? And we talked, I said, you know, sure, we'll do that. Folks, you get a lot, you get less money for selling a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar townhouse than you do a five-hundred-thousand-dollar single-family residence. There's less money in the whole thing. So that, that's an economic loss, but the county asked for it, we need it. And we said, fine, we'll do it. People are getting concerned about apartments, townhouses, you know, not in my backyard. Well, we put them on the west side of our property next to a bunch of NIMBY uses that are already there. And that's where they're gonna, you know, that's where they're gonna go. You would have to drive into this property, something like three-quarters of a mile, to ever see some of this. So it, you know, it's not there. County road department, and we checked with them again recently, they want to move the road over to the light at Publix and bring it straight through. That's fine. We have, nobody's done a formal traffic study on this yet. We're not asking for a development order, you know, we're not, we're not at that point. And, but the county believes, as we believe, that we will make significant traffic improvements in the area as a result of this. In addition, and we put in the developers' agreement, that we'd be happy to put in an intermodal station or whatever. If the county adopts, if they're gonna go to buses, if they're gonna go to trams, whatever they're gonna do, you know, we've got land, we can connect here and happy to do that. I heard again, the number forty-seven percent wetlands thrown out, that is incorrect by my math. I did the simple division and it's thirty-seven percent. And, you know, when you're in silviculture, people are saying, well, you know, you could, this property could get clear-cut. We always clear-cut it, you know, for a hundred years it's been clear-cut. And Saint Joe clear-cut before us. And where most of these folks' homes are today was property that was used by Saint Joe Paper Company, okay? And they clear-cut the trees as well. The other thing, though, that you have with silviculture, which I hate and isn't a good thing, is you clear-cut the trees, then you dig the stumps, okay? Then you typically plow the property. And after you do all of that, then you go in and you plow it again to make windrows and then you plant it. And the windrows then direct the runoff and eliminate sheet flow and screw it up, okay? What Scott's drawing here is a plan that has the linear east-west lakes. They're bigger than ponds. And that was done deliberately. It was done for flood control. It was done in, you know, again, we talked with the folks at the organization for the bay and preserving the bay and not getting sediments there. So these are designed to be big enough so that you could really have good sediment particulates filter out before the water gets out of there. The state, and one of the reasons we made the trade, the state's no longer working this part of the forest around us now. And if you go out there, there's just all myriad underbrush, ten feet tall under their trees. There's gonna be a horrendous fire down here at some point. And part of what, what we were doing and what we have tried to do is maintain some water for fire suppression when the time comes, because it's not a win, you know, if thing, it's just a win thing. I heard that all residents are against this. That's not true. We noticed, we noticed everybody who owned property around here. I may have missed something, but not a single person who had joined this property, who got a letter, stood up and spoke out in opposition to this. Scott handled that. I think of all the calls he got, they were all positive, except for a people that lived next to this. One called him that was negative, okay? The, they're talking about flood control. Well, my family got into that business a long time ago, seventy years ago. And we actually started a flood control and drainage district in Broward County. The state authorized it and we've operated it ever since. Now, you know, down there, you're talking about pad levels on homes six to eight feet above sea level, okay? You really have to have a flood control plan and water storage capacity to deal with that. And we've been in it for seventy years. My cousin is, sits on the board, my brother sits on the board, the other one is Eric, my nephew's here tonight. We're all about flood control. And one of the commissioners was concerned about that and we talked with them. That's why, it's another reason why those ponds look the way they do. The, the other thing is, we would like to catch traffic, you know? We talked about a little bit of, of commercial in the PUD on the north end of this. And, you know, if you ask them, I'm sure Kristen and Mac will tell you that a long time ago, in a meeting with them, I told them, look, if it became an issue, we certainly will commit to agree to density, okay? Because we don't need more density. That density is never gonna be that high anyhow, because of issues we're gonna have to go through with the water management district and with FDP, now they take over the federal rule for the Army Corps. So that isn't, that isn't gonna be a problem. But things need to be done in a proper order. You know, you gotta start somewhere. This, this, how we came up with CR was in a meeting and we were looking at possibly doing another town center. And after we looked at it for an hour, hour and a half, and talked about different things, Kristen said to me, you know, your problem here is in the density, it's a CR. You gotta get out from under the CR and into something where you can cluster your houses and avoid messing up the wetlands, okay? We, we plan, this is gonna be a legacy project for our family. We're not developers. We're gonna ensure that that happens. It's, it's not gonna be covered with GMO modified slash pine when we get done. It's gonna be reforested. None of the slash pine that everybody loves was on any of these properties a hundred and fifty years ago, you know? It's time to get things back the way they were with the indigenous stuff. So we would ask that you approve this, you approve the subject to, you know, the commission agreeing to appropriate developer agreement. We, we would have given you one sooner, except that we got the email, we weren't aware of it. I'm not, you know, Mister Walton County Code. And I got an email Friday from Kristen saying, you gotta have a developers' agreement. So it may be quick to you, but we worked hard over the weekend to try, to try to hit these points. And now, it needs to be considered by the county commission. They need to work with us on it. We've asked everybody, you know, tell us what you wanna do. And we're gonna go there. And that's, that's the attitude. Once we, we're hoping the Foreman family to carry this thing all the way through so that it doesn't get screwed up. And when the final development order is entered, the entity or group that actually does the construction and puts in the homes and things that go in here, or the townhouses, or the apartments, that they have a binding document that controls them so that it gets done the way it ought to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, comments, thoughts, motion?
I got a question. Scott?
Yes, sir.
What is the actual percentage of wetlands on this property?
Mr. Forman's right. It's about thirty-seven percent through here. With this, there's about a hundred and twenty-one acre total. And with this concept, I believe we were all proposing to impact maybe about twenty of it. Now, that doesn't include the parts that we're gonna enhance and hopefully to enhance and make better versions. But actually, from, through a...
Sixty acres, you said.
I forgot one thing. As a people saying too, that, you know, these developers, they ruin wetlands, they tear down the forest, they do all that stuff. Can you plug it in?
Okay.
Bear with me for one second. Is this gonna take a long time? We can skip it. I just wanted to tell you that, take another minute of your time, she said she had this on a roll, that, you know, I'm not that guy. It's not working, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was gonna...
All right. Anything else?
I've got a question back to, I know we said it's, it's not going to change the density, but it is... But it is going to change the amount of units you can build in there because now you're able to clear that sixty percent that you couldn't clear before. So you would definitely be able to build more units on it if you're able to use that sixty percent. So I don't wanna be confused by that, so.
Ask Scott.
I, I would say that what we would do if we wanted to build ten number of units and do it on less land area, we'd make the lot smaller. Which is really not, would be good for this area or county and all thing, but instead of sixty-five by one twenty-five, we'd do forty feet wide, you know?
But that would make a difference on what you could build there, if you're, if you're making the lot smaller.
No, we'd, we'd probably get the same number. They would just be much smaller, more condensed, so.
The houses would be smaller.
Yes, the houses would be much smaller, which I don't think is a dimension for ultra grass.
No, I mean, look, we can do this without the ponds and without the water treatment, without the, you know, flood control. We can leave all the slash pines up and not touch them. So we don't have to deal with that, we don't have to mitigate it. But I actually authored the part that was adopted of the land use plan recently for credits, where you could get credits if you went in and did something good. If you restored wetlands, created new wetlands, enhanced wetlands, did those things, that, that's where we're looking to go. But we, we don't know, the, the idea of the, the lakes may get slammed in our face by DEP. We haven't got there yet, but we wanna fight for it, cause it will be better.
So you still have to go then, you still gotta get approved from DEP, whatever you touch on.
And Water Management District, and we gotta go through your PUD process and get a final development order. And we'll be back to everybody again. And at that time, there will be construction level detail.
So the, we all know the FEMA maps are outdated, been outdated for a long time, except for the ones they've updated, which is not very many. So are you giving consideration to asking them to look at those?
Yeah.
See if they can take a look at it and, and look at the map and update it?
Yeah, we actually did kind of a preliminary based flood evaluation of the whole area here for Foreman's Department, just to look at it. Hasn't been submitted to FEMA or anything yet, cause they just don't know exactly what they're gonna do. We kind of have to take that into consideration. But yeah, that, that, it's an unnumbered zone, so that means nobody's ever formally studied the area, so they don't know what it is. You know, so that would be part of the processes that go through. And you would kind of need to consider what the proposed improvements would be with that. And that would be done in that edition.
We did look at it, though. We spent a good bit of money, so we would have an idea of what we were dealing with, you know? And we, we think it can be dealt with fine, you know?
You think it can be dealt with fine? Hopefully you think it can be dealt with fine.
No, I know it can. It's a mathematical certainty, you know? It's a volume of water and where you're gonna put it and what you're gonna do. And, and it, and it works based on the numbers.
Well, I know there's been some conversation about, and it's been said here tonight about the, the growth in the area and how many people there are here. And what are you gonna do with them? I absolutely one hundred percent agree with that. There's so many people down here now that they can't move. There's nowhere to park, there's nowhere to go. The streets are full. Unless you get some more highways and, and something in for the infrastructure and be able to move people, what are you gonna do with that many people down here? But I understand you're gonna be able to do something with the property, one way or another, you can do something with the property. But I absolutely agree with that. At some point in time, we gotta slow something down till we get some way to move people around. Till we get some way to park people, till we get something so they can, you know? And everybody always says, there's a, we're gonna put in a tram system if we put in a tram system. But that tram system's not here yet. We're not moving people with that tram system yet. So I agree, we have a problem down here with, with the amount of people that's here. And it keeps growing and it keeps growing and people have nowhere to park. They have nowhere. I, I don't come down here near as much as I used to because there's nowhere to park and I don't like to walk all that much.
Anybody else? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would like to throw it out there that I know he wants to do something with the property. I think there's some unknowns here. I think there's some, there's some things about the wetland areas that I would like to see get some answers to before I would vote to change it, to do anything with it. So that's just my, my fault on it. And I think there's some, I think there's some concerns, that's some legitimate concerns that I'd like to see addressed so we have more answers. That's just my, my feeling.
I do believe that it gives them the ability to develop a lot nicer subdivision if we change it. And they're gonna get somewhere close to what they would get anyway. So, and I, I'd rather see something done that, that looks good than just throw a bunch of houses on property and you don't have amenities in there, cause you can't fit them in there. But I understand what you're saying about more, more information too. I mean, this, they don't give us a lot of information when we do a land use change. You know, it's the next steps when you get the information.
I think as you move through the process, you gain something at each step. I think what's been shown is quite intelligent planning. It's a matter of, you have to get one piece done before you can move to the next piece. And nothing's going to be improved until everybody agrees it's being done right. But I think that, and why people will say you're rushing, I don't think you're rushing anything because you're not doing anything until they go through. It's part of the process. This is the first step of the process. Now, what, what concerns would me more than anything is making sure that if we move this forward with a favorable recommendation, the condition be that this development order be completed. Development agreement be completed before it goes to the BCC. And making sure that the concerns that have been addressed here tonight are as addressed as thoroughly as possible in that agreement.
If I can have some direction for the developer's agreement, is the number one concern ensuring what the density will be?
My number one concern is controlling density and not letting it explode. Because I don't think that the infrastructure in place in that area is sufficient to handle it. And not just within the development, I'm talking about Chat Holly Road three ninety-three and all these others. I think that, you know, maintaining density like they seem to be saying in here is where we wanna be. Density is my main concern. Infrastructure as far as the enhanced wetlands is very important. Making sure water has a place to go and it goes there the way it's supposed to go there. Those are my concerns. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Is this the kind of stuff that can be done before the next county commission meeting? Cause they've got it set up for like the thirteenth, don't they?
Right.
So that's pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they work with me, I'm, I'm trying with them, but we, like, it's time to have that. So we say we'll work with them, we can change as needed. Oh, I'm sorry. I just said as long as we can work together on getting those changes that are needed in the agreement, I think it'll be fine.
No, I do believe they've got a lot, a lot more to work with if this, if this does pass. And I'd rather see something nice than something that's just, looks haphazardly thrown in there because we've seen a lot of that. And it's gonna really handcuff them if they don't have this ability. So I'm gonna recommend that we approve it with the, the enhancements done to the development agreement that you say need to be done and that, that will limit density to what y'all said, two units per acre, except on the infill piece. And, I can't think of anything else that needs to be in there.
Do we have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
We have four ayes and one aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're gonna take about ten minutes.
I did think they'll do like, they'll do something better with it.
Do I get to do that again?
I can do it like this on your head.
Yeah. That's all right. He got another medium to go to. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. I believe we're on item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Seagrove Regional Beach Access Small Scale Amendment. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. It's a small scale amendment submitted by Josh Irvin on behalf of the Walton County TDC and Board of County Commissioners. Requesting approval to change the adopted future land use of neighborhood infill, neighborhood commercial and residential preservation and a parcel that's not classified to parks and recreation on approximately one point three eight nine acres. The project's located east of County Road three ninety-five and identified by the parcels in your package. The applicant is here and is prepared to present their case.
Good evening, commissioners. As Mac presented me, I'm Josh Irvin. I'm here to represent the Terrace Development Council. Essentially what we have before you today is a land use change to change to the aforementioned land uses to parks and recreation. We feel like that is a good fit for this. What we are proposing on the site is a bathroom facility, surface level parking, and then a connecting dune walkover down to the beach. We are simply in the rough, I guess, stage of design right now. I would classify it around thirty percent. But it's our hope with this land use change that we can move forward with that design and be ready to have this park open by mid of twenty nineteen.
This is, this is the property, the recently purchased property by the county.
That's great. It's a total of three parcels. This is just to the west of Hinton Drive on thirty A and the Seagrove Beach area.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions for Mr. Irvin? All right.
Y'all gonna have it ready this spring?
I'm sorry?
Y'all trying to get it ready this spring?
It'd probably be summer. We, we've got a number of challenges with some wetland impacts that we're gonna have to mitigate. So that's probably gonna take a little more time than originally I had planned for. But, you know, summer of twenty nineteen is our goal as of right now.
Thanks, Josh. Is there anybody who would like to address this item? CNN will close, we will close public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I think it's a wonderful thing. I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion? Who's the second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, we want it quasi judicial, so.
Right. All of our, our remaining items are quasi judicial items. If anyone anticipates testifying on any of the remaining items on the agenda, if you would stand and to be sworn in, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide to this board will be the truth? When you come forward, just state your name and state that you've been sworn in.
Mac Harpinger and I have been sworn. First item under our QJA section of our agenda is the Verizon Wireless Cell Tower at Pretty Pond. This has been approved, or this is a request to approve a final order. It's been reviewed by Renee Bradley. It's a major development application. It's submitted by SAM Inc. and Bob Chopra on behalf of Verizon Wireless and William and Cheryl Jones. Requesting approval to develop a one hundred and sixty foot monopole cell tower on approximately fifteen one hundredths of an acre leased out of a two hundred and fifty-two acre parcel with the future land use of rural village. The project's located across from Sunrise Road on US Highway three thirty-one North and it's identified by the parcel number in your package. The applicant is here and is prepared to make his case. And if we could enter the staff report into the record.
Excellent.
Good evening, Bob Chopra with SAM. Previously sworn in. The purpose of this site is to improve cell coverage for Verizon customers in the northern part of the county, north of Dufuniac Springs. Highway three thirty-one is also an evacuation route, so it'll help cell coverage along that road as people travel north, like in north of Dufuniac Springs. The impact to the area is pretty minimal. This is a, a, a pretty rural, a pretty rural location on, on a, on a two hundred and fifty-two acre parcel of land. So I think the effects of, on any residences or any, any folks in there is minimal at best. The closest house is eighteen hundred feet away.
Commissioners, any questions for the developer?
Yeah, I got a question. What's, what's the radius of the cell phone towers?
It's, it's all based on height. So where this site is proposed, the closest cell tower to the north is about three and a half miles. So the taller the tower, the greater the radius. The lower the tower, the, the shorter the radius. So a two hundred and fifty foot tower, let's say, would be maybe five to six miles. A shorter tower, a hundred and fifty foot tower, maybe two to three miles.
So, so the radius is only like six miles around the tower?
Give or take, again, depending on the height of the tower.
I can tell you this will be an important bridge in a big gap on three thirty-one.
Yeah.
You need to put one over on Highway eighty-five.
Closest one to the west.
Yeah.
Uh, to the west is...
Yeah, I ask that because I live to the west of it.
West Dufuniac is four and a half miles to the west.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Open up public comments. Anybody wants to speak on this item? Then I'm gonna close public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I will be true. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to item number eight, the MAC Bayou Lot Six and Seven application. It's a request to approve a final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. This major development order application has been submitted by Jenkins Engineering, Inc. on behalf of MBRE Healthcare. Requesting approval to develop approximately twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-two square feet of general office, medical and ancillary space on lots six and seven of the MAC Bayou Center development, which totals approximately one point five five acres with the future land use of village mixed use. Project's located from the intersection of Highway ninety-eight and MAC Bayou Road. Heading north, take a right on MAC Bayou Loop. And it is lot six and seven on the left. Parcels are identified by the numbers in your package. The applicant is here and is prepared to present his case. And we'd like to enter the staff report into record.
Excellent.
Good evening, Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, representing the project. You'll see here. As Mac said, this is within the existing PUD for MAC Bayou Center. It's a, it's a commercial, previous to that kind of subdivision. They purchased lot six and seven. There's existing buildings on either side. The way this development is done, they kind of require interconnectivity and shared access points off of MAC Bayou Loop, which this has, the building basically on the front here. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but this is, this one's pretty straightforward, I believe.
Yep. Commissioners? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Open up public comments. Anybody wish to comment on this item? CNN will close public comments. Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number ten.
Yes, sir. This is the Seacrest Dental application. It's a request to approve a final order. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown. It's been submitted as a major development by McNeil Carroll Engineering on behalf of Melfred LLC. Requesting approval to develop eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-three square feet of commercial building on approximately one point seven two acres with the future land use of village mixed use. Project's located on the west side of US three thirty-one South, north of Greenway Trail and south of Bay Magnolia Lane. Identified by the parcel numbers in your package. The applicant is here and prepared to present his case.
Good evening, Robert Carroll, McNeil Carroll Engineering, seventeen eight hundred, Pennont City Beach Parkway. I have been sworn in. As Mac eloquently described it, it's dental office right around the corner from you here. It'll have a dental office in the front and an office building in the back. It'll have shared parking. Our developer owns, he will own all of it and have leasable space. Pretty straightforward DOT access. There is a right away in the back that we had a little issue with and we've completely added that now. So I think we've addressed every comment, so we're just here to respect our ass for approval. so we're just here to respect your ask for approval.
Commissioners, any questions, the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Open for public comments, anybody who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close them. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe that's our last, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Is it just six, Barry?
Yep.
That ain't bad at all. You got it? Now, remember, that's just a work in progress. Weren't near as many people here as I would expect, you know? How you doing, sir?
Appreciate your service.
Well, thank you.